I don't know it, I know both of them.
I know one that pursue a carry.
I'm gonna call the county clerk at six o'clock. Very new addition for you.
I will. I look down and grace this holy Father, we thank this day. The Lord we thank for all of these blessings in life. Father, we just ask for that you be with us, Lord, today as we make the decisions for this county. The Lord, I pray that everything that would be said and done will be honored and pleasing to you, Father. I go with this family, if they remain this week, then lead God direct us, what's in Jesus' name I do pray. Amen.
Let's believe. Let's believe. The United States of America. And we're a government of which is founded on our nation, on our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Both come in, we got Jason Lamm.
Thank y'all for allowing me to stick with Mike.
You got five minutes.
I'll be good there. Oh, our base action is A B M. We have a lot of county governments all around you, from Irwin County to Dooley to Turner, I'm at Lowns now. And the state of Georgia allows county governments like yourself to look at programs that can save you utility costs and operational costs from how you operate your county facilities. My company guarantees those costs and takes that money, puts it back into your infrastructure from replacing roofs to older HVAC, things that are necessary, but you know, as county commissioner, you always don't get aside about doing that. So it saves you money. You can do all this without getting money upfront. No money can do construction, and then the savings pays for the cost. If we miss our savings, we have to write you a check for the difference, so you're made whole. So it's budget neutral, so it's basically like a money spend now, guarantee those savings and put it back into your budget and into your infrastructure. We did a program for your school system here about five years ago. Like I said, we've done Dooley County, this around you, Dooley, Turner, Irwin County, start construction there next week. Alaus County Government just chose us to do our investment grade audit. There is a verithic process, it's not a sprint, okay? I just want to share with you the high level concept. The next step, if you want to take it, does not cost you anything, that can lead you to anything. It's more about understanding, more about the opportunity. That's called a feasibility study. What that means is that anyone who gets, for those months of utility spending for your buildings and square footage of your buildings, come into a high level walkthrough or developer. And I would come back to this commission with you a more of a presentation, more about the concept, a little more in depth. And also some data, your own data to share with you, what may be possible. And then from there, you can decide if you don't, if you went the next step, which is put out an RFQ by a state law, you have to, you know, let anybody that wants to entertain this opportunity, they can, by law. Or if you don't want to take the next step, that'd be up to you too. But that's really what I wanted to share with you tonight. And if you have any questions, we'd be glad to help you. Like I said, if you want to take the next step, then when I come back, I'll have you a full presentation, a good one in depth of the concept, and also the feasibility time that we found for you.
My question is, did you save the school any money?
Yes, sir, we've done the job of saving them. I don't have the exact numbers. I didn't do that project, I'm going to focus on county governments and city government. And so, like I said, the good thing about it is if you know, I don't know if you know, Mr. Carroll Hudson up in Dooley, been 34 years from the war. A lot of strong references, brand new laws you can call and talk to on how we did things. But again, the next phase would be, the next step would just be to do the preliminary study. That will give you data to come back and say, hey, here's what I think you could do. Well, if you do it, look at how much your bills are spent per square foot compared to some of your buildings around you up county after we helped them. Well, even on the average, so Cockwood Government and Moultrie, I've done two programs for them, one back in 2016 and one last year. I saved bills so far over 50, excuse me, over 500,000 utilities in every county. Well, we cut their utility costs by 46%.
Basically, you're coming in to survey the buildings and recommend a technology and efficiency type improvements with insulation lighting.
Yeah, well, and then, yes, sir, the idea is using those things to pay for more expensive things, like, you know, if you ever had a price of roof, you know, every job we do, we have roofs involved. We put a brand new roof on the courthouse in the cockpit. Here and there, it's not cheap. So it's basically using money, it's already a budget, but going to utility companies, the operational cost, and then putting that money back into your, but the great thing about it is that cost being upfront. I was just telling, telling them in the back, they actually on school board, where I'm from, from '08 to 2020, and that's how I met A B M, we did two programs during a 10-year span. Now, I ran a bank at that time, so I'm a financial person by nature, but it's a financial solution. It's good government, then five straight streams. And A B M's a large company, we're a $6 billion company. We focus mainly on infrastructure, we run the land airport, from parking lot to cleaning the airport, so anything facility based we can do. But my side is the energy solutions side. But now, we got a lot more references, just those that I mentioned, I just want to mention ones that were close than a 60 mile radius to you all. But again, the only thing that, you know, we thought, I wanted to ask was if you wanted to do the feasibility study, and the only thing that costs you is a little information and maybe about a half a day for one of my guys to immediately walk through your buildings. And then come back to y'all with a full presentation that y'all can really have something, you know, to really ask questions on.
I would like for you to leave us some references.
Absolutely.
Or you've got to leave them tonight.
I can get a little more, yeah.
Some references, get the heaven where she can call and text.
Absolutely.
But I would, I would love to have a feasibility study now. Get your own coffee now.
That costs you an extra commission anyway. It's just more about, because I may come back and say, and not enough to help you, you know, because I never know until I start looking in your church.
Nobody in motion for a study.
I get the references they do. Do you have the email or do you?
Of course, I have the D S company.
Okay, I'll get that D S, I'll get that stuffy more.
Perfect.
I'll also send with something. Thank y'all for giving me a few minutes, I appreciate you very much.
Approve the measure, approve the request, go on and go on.
This is a specific computer.
It is a motion.
I'll say.
In discussion, all vote. Approve to make, approve to fade monthly bills.
I'll make a motion.
Second, in discussion, all vote. Approve, deny, and for change.
I make a motion to approve. And I'll say. In discussion, all vote.
Approve courthouse cleaning contract. They've got that in the package, it's right there.
Can you give us a synopsis of what we did, so I know we're gonna vote on that one down.
Yeah, so they couldn't do the night days, so we come back and ask if they could do it with your contract. That is one person Monday through Friday. For all together, it'll be monthly, $26 bill monthly. And that'll be a local person hired for a year.
Local person?
Yes.
That's why he could do, yes, that's why we wanted to do here, is they could give someone local a job.
I make a motion to approve this for me. And I'll say.
In discussion, all vote. And then pull that on the June 11th, so tomorrow.
Well, it'll, I'll call in tomorrow, and let it know that it was approved, and then we'll burn from there.
Approve, deny, carry over vacation time for E M F employees from this year to next year.
And have the call of COVID-19.
That's right. Uh, yeah, I know it's not a typical request that you have to ask to rotate or to move a vacation time from the end of the period to the new year. But as you've gone with this code of 19 that's going around, we've been shorthanded. We've had two medics that actually have tested positive, and one's doing well. The other, they've made a turnaround, doing actually a lot better today. I actually have put a, they put a phone to his ear, where I can talk to him, and he's not able to talk, Kevin, it was on his head. So I have some praise for it, I'll let everybody know, and appreciate the prayers for him to continue. But over the, over the course of this, I've had two medics that their vacations are getting close, but instead of taking it, they did the fact that we were actually shorthanded. They only get to stay on work to help get us through the crisis. They owe, each one has around roughly $63 that they still have to take. Well, at the end of this month, they'll end up with 63 hours left. I'm asking you to consider, allow them at least, or E M S, 60 days, that'll be where I can stagger them. I can't let them have it all in one month. But if I can, they will take it, stagger it in the next two months, and get their vacation out without cost management penalties for their next year's anniversary vacation. It's really they stepped up to the plate, done a lot, all the department has, they've come to the aid and helped out a lot. I actually cut the part-time folks from coming in from other counties to work, trying to keep us as safe as we could over there. And they really, they've done a fantastic job, and I would like for you to consider doing that for them, to just allow them, if you get 60 days, I think we can get to work in unless there's another bench, third in the spokes.
As this, this is, just to clarify, this is vacation time, vacation's not sick.
No, it is vacation time, and this is not something I want to come back here with you with. This is just a non-traditional type of thing that we just run, and I really appreciate that consideration.
You really think 60 days is enough to work that out?
Well, I think I can, but I don't, I can't do it, it takes a little longer than 60 days. But I asked them, I said, if you do, I want you to take it as quick, as quickly as you can. I don't want it to build up to the end of the year, then we're back in the same thing.
I don't, I don't want it on 90 days.
Yeah, that would be fine, but if, what I'm getting at is we're going to do it as soon as we can, start in July.
Right, okay. Well, I'm gonna make a motion because of COVID-19 epidemic, that we will approve this request to extend the vacation time of these two individuals for up to 90 days.
Say. In discussion, all vote.
I say.
A point number to the J D A Board. Uh, we had a vacant slot on the board, we had somebody that thought what they were anticipating is they thought they'd be able to, so basically, they decided they probably needed to go off. And surprisingly, we had quite a few applicants. So anyway, we've got five applicants here, one being Tim Taylor, this is in your packet. Tim Taylor being one of them. Eric Griffin being another one, if you want to take the time to review those. Brad Powell being another one. And then we had two that we only got first page on file, so we'd have to say those were incomplete applications. So then we've got three complete packets and two cover pages. You all need some time to look over those, or have y'all already done some?
What's the complete packet, is that, what does that fill out?
Probably about eight or 10 pages. We got the first page, I don't know.
Oh, well, I only had the first page.
Right. And one, one fact that brought in to her is just the first page, so it'll be, it's just.
Yeah, that's all I got. I have another one, other than what you sent me, it's broken. Yeah, because that's what John sent me.
All regardless, I don't know what to answer.
Whatever the rest actually is, complete packet, but.
Where it was put through the paper more beautifully, I don't know like that.
No, it has in paper that they could email me. Yeah, I think so. I don't, I don't know, I'm just going to go where I had on the. Yeah, there was just one page that was emailed, but I didn't serve it. I think we need to.
Well, give me the other two, thanks. If somebody wants to go on, then you can always.
Get them to fill out.
Fill out plan, that's what I want.
Then we have John Bloodworth and Lori Chang for the other one.
Huh?
I'll make a motion, Tim Taylor.
I'll say that. Anybody saying one of them?
Would they have people?
I don't, no, I'll make it, Lori.
Well, you want any motion, then we can do it all. Tim Taylor on there, got a second? Any more discussion?
I understand. I want to say something about five things.
Oh.
I think we put John Bloodworth on there as a, sort of like you sort of, but Ken, I think John needs to sort of put the city. We need to do something.
We could have, we could have changed the bylaws, we could have changed the bylaws.
Well, the city ain't Ken, so it looks like we can put him on there.
Yeah, I think that should do that, yeah, there's that to redo.
The city would have to do, because it's a joint vote, for the city to agree to do that.
The city would have to put him on it.
Well, they have to, yeah. But I mean, bylaw would have to change that. But yeah, I think that's great.
But we probably could say John, we'd have to say representative of the city, and then that would be obvious choice.
But I think they need some other there.
They do? That'd be great. Well, next one, approve, deny, point two existing member. You got Terry Stone and John Marshall.
I'll make a motion to approve both of them. And I'll say it.
In discussion, all vote. Discuss training for candidate.
Yeah, you want to play it through the hand, or you're gonna tell it?
Yes.
Um, so basically, A C C G, they do the recommendation of the Society for Human Resources. Um, they offer a class in Atlanta, but it's $1,400. But they have a self-study program that's 400, or it's under $400. And they recommended that I do that training. But also, I went to Coffee County and their HR manager recommended that I go to, and it's G L G P A. And it's basically governmental HR training. It's a conference twice a year in the fall and the spring, basically to update everybody on the laws and ordinances and changes and everything like that. So basically, it's a self-study program and then two conferences a year.
I guess even one in person, probably, we'd be September for you to probably go to that.
The next one is in November, and they haven't set a price for it because they're not sure if it'll have to be put off yet. So, and that's in La Grange.
I'll make a motion that you go ahead and bake self-study course. And what was that one you were asking about?
Well, it's G L G P, I think is the name of it, it's in La Grange in November, it's the next training.
And I want to go to that area.
Oh, and they already set a date for it, or they just set it?
It's November 17th is the first date, and I think it's the training.
I'll make a motion that I go ahead and let it be self-study, and the G L G P training. G L A P.
Okay.
Say again.
I think it's G L G P A.
G L G P A training.
I'll say that. You got a second? In discussion, all vote.
I want to say Hannah stepped up the plate, says she's been doing for all of it, she's done the breakout.
Approve, deny, road department, that of July the 2nd, all for the April 2nd holiday, all central are closed on Friday. You gonna step up again, Hannah?
Um, July 4th is on this Saturday, so we are closed July 3rd, which is Friday. But the road department is already closed on Friday, so Robert Lewis asked if you would be willing to switch their holiday for that Thursday the 2nd.
I make a motion, we'll do that. Please, second, I'll say.
I'll say.
In discussion, all vote. Discuss E M F directors scheduling. All vote.
Gentlemen, I'm kind of busy today, I asked you to modify my schedule a little bit. I took the job and I'm staying on a 24-hour shift and eight-hour call, work. That's my regular shift, two days off. Since I've taken over, there's been tremendous amount of changes that's coming down through the state office as far as changes in our licenses, as far as personal license, and also our county license to be able to handle service. Also, we've had changes in training, changes in all different things that's coming through that we're having with COVID that's being tipped in. There's almost, there have been daily, or at least weekly, webinar seminars, emails, all kinds of different tracking things that's coming in all during the week. And some are scheduled, some are not scheduled. And I'm asking that if we could, instead of a 24-hour, eight shift, the way I'm working, change it to five days a week. To ensure that I'm there to take care of things. Before we start throwing rocks at them, let me explain to you just a little bit. To do this, first, there is not the state region, which is Mr. Rock and Chad, region I have a director, said that there's no other region works for any other investment rate that would work the way we do. Which that's neither here nor there, I don't ever want to characterize us as doing anything somebody else is doing, we can do our own thing here, that's fine. But due to the fact that the work is, I'm there just about every day, trying to get things caught up, going, working for extra votes and such as that. With me getting to work the five days a week, it would help out a lot in things that has to be done as far as operational of the office itself. There's more training for us and the E M T, or directors and the E M Ts that has to be taken care of. The whole maintenance, I'll be there on the job site during the daytime, office hours, which would allow me to work. When vacation time comes up, I will take, I will work their shift through the daytime, which would save the county overtime for as the employee working. I will be there for any discrepancies, any types of complaints, customer relations that come in, taking care of the business that's coming down at hand, take care of the maintenance. The, and we'll provide double coverage during the daytime with another ambulance here. And right now, since, since January the 1st, we've had roughly 60 mobile calls that has occurred during daytime hours. Where we've only had one truck available, and the other couple had to wait if I was there, and we've been offered to respond, rescue, vehicle transport. Question maybe you can't rescue, respond, book them that can, and they can't, I'll transport the patient without a medic being in the back for with an ambulance. Take care of all the maintenance firsthand, know what's going on the whole time, the whole operations of the, the whole gamut of the operations on a weekly basis would be able to be taken care of instead of having to work. The 24, and then all for two days. It just gives me more time to take care of everything. And I'm asking them to do that. I think our budget would handle it. Right now, the way I work is around seven or eight days actually a month, is what it turns out to be, with seven, eight days on call. Call, I'm not required to be there unless I get called in. The way I've been doing that would be some, if I, if you agree to do this, you're increasing my days to 22 to 25 days a month. And I'd be on-site during that time, provide that type of services such as that. And I'm just asking that you look at that and see if we can, if you'd be interested in that or entertain that idea. Mr. Hollis, I know, probably crossing your mind, when we went through dinner, you asked me that, and when I told you that, we talked about it, I asked that, and if you asked me, was that a deal breaker? Basically, when you said, I told you no, but I would like to rehash it a little bit later. I didn't know it was going to be this soon, but there has been a lot of changes going down. We've got, uh, protocols and policies that I'm having to redo, and we never had to, but I don't have anything to go by, or have to redo on my scratch. Some things will be modified, some on my scratch, some things is coming down, and we don't know exactly what's going to be handed to us, but we've got other things coming down in mind. COVID has changed the whole traditional EMS and for the whole world, but that hasn't stopped with us here.
I guess my first comment on that being, somebody used to be here during, I mean, you've got webinars, teleconferences, educational opportunities, all these things that come up during the day, they're not going to have to come in nine on second.
That's right.
And without having the director here to actually take that information and absorb it, distribute it out to his people, um, you know, I can see that being a major issue. Plus, um, you know, I think at that time, we were extremely shorthanded.
Yes, sir.
And I don't know how your situation really looks with that. Uh, we're probably still shorthanded if you've got people that haven't missed up on the vacation, but, uh, I'm assuming you put some thought into that, how you manage that with the ninety days and the vacation that they've got to use up in the next couple of months as a duel for you.
I think it is. We're now, actually, right now, only now, one medic, and that's the one that we were talking about, didn't see. I have opened the doors back up since the government lifted some of his things, some of his restrictions, that where we are now, and some of our other part-time to, to come in and work occasionally. We're nice and doing pretty good with the staff that we've got and the dedication that they have shown. We're, we're, we're okay right now. I'm hoping we're on the rebound and that we're going to be able to recover from this, but he's not sure when Jimmy's going to be back. He's going to be down for a while, so I won't be short for one, regardless of what, but my part-time, we've got two or three local part-time people who are really willing to work at any time just about, and are part, are full-time still in the gaps. When you're just when they're out on vacation, or when they're sick, during those first times, or first part of the day, to where they actually would have to be hired a roadhead or partner, or somebody to pay overtime, I would actually cut those shifts for them until we can get, uh, till after my shift was over, let's put it this way. Now, just because my shift ended at five o'clock, that mean that I'm off. It means that I, my shifts ended, and then I still respond from home, just like I always have, to backup calls. But it, during the daytime, just like the day, we had two or three calls that needed assistance in any way. I was there to give those guys to, to assist. But we do have a lot of, a lot of calls coming in, and when I say multiple, I'm not talking about one or two, there's three or four. It's, that would be a real big benefit, at least to have somebody to respond to that second ambulance for, to assist in bad calls. And the way I'm working now, when you get in there, you say, my gosh, you're there twenty-four hours, what can't you get it done? You get sat down, started working with the protocols and the policies and such as that, the call comes in, you have to leave and go out to it. By the time you come back, you gotta get your part timing back together, or if there's a transfer to Savannah, your day's shot. Somewhere you've got to be able to, to relax. My last shift, we had seventeen patient contacts that made a twenty-four hour call, or twenty-four hour shift. So it's not like we're not doing anything, it's, we're working. And, uh, but we could use a, I, I, to make sure this thing does what it needs to be, for me, I would love to be able to have the five day a week.
You'll still be able to make contact, because, you know, definitely be signature that day shift guy now. Uh, so I mean, the way you rotate the schedule around, you're still going to have contact with.
I, my shift, I'll work, I'll be there nine hours every day.
Yes.
Monday through Friday. Now, uh, doing that, that, that'll be, uh, my shift, everybody else's shift. Somebody's out, I'm there for nine hours. The only thing to change would be the, the evening shift on my work shift and call shift. Now.
Any motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll say it, but I don't believe, I don't believe it, that, for, for, to be amended if necessary.
Mr. Bruce, I actually have that on your box from the mix.
Because I think there's something that, that, you know, I need to talk with all of you before I, to make sure we. But I mean, I, I, I forward, I just want to make sure. So I, I'll say, with, with the, need to talk to a lot of people.
Any discussion?
Can I ask a question in the discussion board? Yes. Well, you talk to me also, so I'll know what we're talking about, with the law, and what's happening, or what, what, what's, what's your concern? Yeah, yeah, okay.
You kind of put me for a loop with that.
Well, I just, I just called about it, so.
Okay. All right, well, I want to ask this. Is this gonna, doing this, even though I'm working more days and such, is that going to change my pay? Since I'm not, I'm only in person? Or are we gonna average it out to where I draw the same calls? But all, we got, that, that's the law.
That's the law.
That's the law, we're about to be leaving the chapel.
That's the order, right there. We're gonna prove it, but we gotta figure out how to do it.
Three days a month? I got a motion, have you got a second? Is that a more than two? It's three days a month additional? Is that right?
Working?
Yeah.
Uh, no, I'm working twenty-five days a month.
Right, I mean, the, the change.
I mean, if I change, it'd be twenty-five days a month.
Right.
And now only at seven to eight.
That, that you were.
Yeah, yeah, as far as the hours, all they're going to be about the same hours.
Yeah.
I think that, if I've got done my math right, you can read change, make sure, but if I've done my math right, uh, I think it's two hundred and twenty-four, now two twenty-five, then, or somewhere between that, in that range.
The month. Ken, any more discussion? All vote? Discuss, recreation park. Bruce?
Well, no, that gets, gets that. Yes, that, yes, that.
Yeah, we just, I was getting, we'll all just finish up the jobs and have it finished. And the paperwork, of course, our paperwork, yeah. And, and if we're talking about three forty-one, we, we, we're gonna call it three forty-one. Before we put the Farm Market Act, and, uh, and we've got to remodel those, uh, bathrooms.
Remodel or, you know, the.
And, and it, this was, this took place before I got on this board. We need to finish it. And so, what, what if we sign, this is all I read, so, do we need to get with the city to help us to finish these projects, or what are we going to do?
I would say yes. On playground and, uh, repurposing the existing building, or building a new one, we have to sign a contract with the city that says they will pay half.
And this has been going on for two years?
That's correct.
Bruce, you want to chime in and tell us what we need to do?
Well, this, I mean, the great, what was it, Brad said, I mean.
It's in black and white.
I mean, it is what it is, and, I mean, we got by last year, I mean.
We need to get it done.
Yes, we need to get it done. There's a guy coming, I think the guy from vice that done the farm work.
Uh-huh.
Supposed to give us, uh, some places, some, some drawings. He was out, he was on, he was full last week, and he's on vacation this week, and he said he'd be here next week, first of the week.
So you want us to get that, and let's, let's get together, who you want to put in charge of that, talking with, with the city, and we need to negotiate.
Somebody want to send a paper?
I would, I would think it may be, I mean, one of y'all, like the chairman or the vice chair. I probably, I mean, they need to, they need to tell us all that or all or not.
Me and Brad were on that committee, but I just assumed. Well, I took one of them papers under here a while back, and I ain't heard nothing.
Well, they got a meeting tomorrow night. Am I right? We're gonna be there.
Thursday, I know.
Thursday night.
You want me to be there?
You'll be there.
All right.
I'll get on the gen.
I'll get on the gen, but we'll talk about this.
But I remember I've got a document, who was out there, Chris Brad, he was there, so.
This is a sign, this is a sign, I mean, they need to, we got to get this done.
Um, it's, it's, it is signed by Mayor and Jerry Wood, and Mr. Barneese, and Sheriff.
Them two.
I mean, I mean, the boss was, I think she was the city, and then Carl, Blake, and Ed Ripken were there.
Well, they don't.
But it's, it's not this document.
Not this document, I said, this is clear, but that's, that's just a, that's a contract.
But this was signed March, uh, March fifteenth, two thousand eighteen.
That's right.
It's been over two years, Bruce. So we need to get fixed.
But, but, that's your question. We are moving on, somebody coming to give us an asset on the new, that we're gonna put a building that we call Under, and, uh.
But we need to, we need to, I make a talk with the city, because they paying half of it. You know what I'm saying? I'm not agreeing with them.
I'm not agreeing, they said with the right board, they were like, they've done that, and they, they do.
So, so we need to discuss it with them too, of who's counting, whatever.
And I mean, before, talk to the football league, but.
Well, we're gonna, I, I'll bring the report back when I find out.
I think Bruce, like yesterday.
Oh, yeah. Hey, we've started, Bruce.
I see, that's, that's good.
Pretty good.
It's been rolling up.
Y'all talking about it too, Brad?
Yeah.
What, what do you want to add to it?
What we add to it or not, we just, you know, we just need to make sure, but, uh, as, as the plan, they need to change your ceiling tiles, bathroom, repainting, please, I mean, it, it, it needs dressing up.
Heather, y'all went out there with the bathrooms.
Yes.
I asked them to go out there and come, and kind of give us a report, because ladies will tell us a little more than men will about the bathrooms, and, what, what was your report?
They're all, so, but, what you have to ask a little like, so, there's gonna need a, a face dressing on it of, um, you know, paint, concrete paint, you can do that, maybe a new vanity. But you also have to keep in mind, to make sure when you, if you're going to rent this out, or if you're gonna have any kind of functions out there, there need, they need to be taken care of. They don't need to be wrote on walls, and that's what you have to look at, because that's what's out there now. So if you're going to spend this money, and you're going to get this done, and things like that, you need to make sure it's taken care of after the fact.
We eliminated that.
Right.
Quickly.
But, but I think we need to do something on, on, on rent it. Rent it or doing something with it. That's a nice facility.
I, I would is.
But we need somebody in charge of that, that's going to take the responsibility, that if, if you go in there after you rent it out, there's paint on the wall, they're responsible for.
But either one of these things we do, and it always gets kind of forgotten, we need to always make sure all this stuff is handicapped accessible.
Definitely.
We, we are, everybody kind of gets after it, so we don't need to forget that on this side. And we've got a lot of handicapped individuals.
Where, where you gonna start at? Bathrooms, is that where we need to start at?
Definitely, bathrooms.
Yeah.
We start there.
Bathrooms and, and, uh, ceiling tiles.
The kitchen, the kitchen ceiling tile is holding, the ceiling's holding through.
I want to say ceilings, bathrooms, you know, fresh pair of paints, and, you know, three of those grease, and, could be a lot better.
Really, it's leaking, the air conditioning, what?
Air conditioning.
We all talking about three forty-one, right?
Now, we're on the air ground.
Yeah, well. Well, we're talking about five or six air conditioners out there that need to be fixed. Well, two of them worked, but two of them, or last time I was there, two of them worked and three of them didn't, so I'm sure, sure they probably need some turks, I mean, they probably ain't been ran enough.
And when we took this thing.
I think this might be a good time for that, you know, man, to, to assess and.
That's right.
Everything out there, tell us, but especially the main building.
That's right. I thought about that.
But they did, do, do things, some things.
But we need to get it where we can rent it out or whatever, because that's a big facility, and it's.
Well, I guess mainly, if we do go back to renting it out, we, we gotta be a lot more selective than what we've seen, because we can't have beer cans and graffiti and everything that some public county is going to do. All right, we start right there. Don't worry, we need to start and get that going.
Yes, sir.
All right, the coat house. And again, about coat house, is, is this guy here is going to give us a little, if he, if he comes and does what he's.
Well, what we do is some things, you know, with the new planning service, for this guy come, uh, uh, I think all of us have talked about it, and, uh, the grounds, they be kept more presentable.
We can do a better job, better job on the ground.
We want more people to go there.
Yes.
Yeah, we're working on that. And another thing we're trying to decide on this last meeting is whether we have the, the person having a place to actually do that presently with the planning service being turned over to somebody else, that free up. Some of our system, first time to be able to maintain, so.
That's, that's kind of, I live in the town, it's a library, but it's just the same thing.
I'll put your hat to the table.
And just making sure them two buildings, I mean, they, they, they a big part of, of when people look at.
I'll park them on each. Over there. Well, we get, looks like this one's looking a little better, I parked a lot of it, so. So Ken, we'll get on that library, um, next, and your whole business. Uh, Mr. Sosa actually pointed this out to me, and I, I hadn't even noticed it. Why don't they take one of our handicap spots when we repainted?
I don't know.
Well, two were flat to side, and now one of them's no parking, and one's handicap. I mean, I'm assuming there, there's a ratio handicap to the numbers of available parking spots.
Well, you're speaking any kind of, what we're saying, we got to stop and we let them get upset, we may.
We don't, we're not calling back to this, to sign, I can't wait anymore. No, I mean, they strapped it out, the camp park, they were signing, they're, they're saying.
Didn't they even give room for anybody in or something to have?
I don't know about.
Some of them had a cut, thought the spot's hard, kind of like a duck.
Well, that's a fight. That right? Any more, any more? You want a new business? Red, I need a motion to go in a second session. I make the motion. This second?
I'll say it.
I'll vote. I made a motion to go back into regular meeting. So, Louis.
I'll say it.
Any discussion? All vote.
All right, I want to make a motion to pay all salary who has owed since January the first, twenty twenty, that were not exempt to pay up. Second.
Any discussion? All vote. All right.
Second thing is, I want to make a motion that we change the red apartment groundkeeper who is now salary to an hourly pay.
Second, make a motion. Second. Any discussion? All vote. Actually, he's second. You ready to make that?
The second motion I want to make concerning red park is to hire a part-time employee at red park.
Second. Any discussion? All vote.
The next thing I want to make a motion is to adopt a policy to address, uh, the COVID mountain family affected employees.
I'll say it. Any discussion? All vote. Please.
Please.